Yes, sir. You sure are.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first work session of 2024. We hope all of you guys have a great Christmas and holiday break. And excited to see you back. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add two items under new business. One is going to be to add a discussion regarding a third Board of Education retreat we need to talk about for March. And then the second one is a discussion to discuss the timeline to fill the vacancy for District Nine at Large. So can I get a motion to add that to the agenda?
Second.
Ms. Stevens, Ms. Kelly, all in favor? Great. Motion passes. So next week, we'll have Mr. Bailey leading us with the invocation and pledge. We'll have the Appalachian High School JROTC cadets here presenting the colors. We will start off with the election of officers after that. We'll approve the minutes from last few meetings, the agenda. We'll have a, I'll lead us in a committee report. And then we'll have a few superintendent recognitions. So now, we're going to go ahead and jump down into the superintendent department reports. We'll start with Dr. Bowen, student, Support Services report.
Yes, we, we have a report from a member of the class, student called it job, something that together.
Awesome. That looks great. Thank you so much for throwing that together for us. All righty. Next, Ms. Houston with the Business Services report.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to go over the invoices paid between $10,000 and $7,000, $74,999 as of 12/19/2023. The first one is Wind River Environmental from the General Fund, $10,000 for the Bethlehem Elementary School septic pump replacement. I'm sure that was a very important purchase. Southern Computer Warehouse out of Capital Projects Funds, $22,462. That was for 22 Chromebook charging carts, and that was district-wide. Charles Black Construction, Stateum Elementary School, school funds, $24,000. And that was for a track out at Stateum Elementary School. Tech Optics paid out of Capital Projects Funds, $19,666.72 for a projector for the cafeteria out at Austin Road Elementary School. Tech Optics, Capital Projects, $29,667 for cable tray for BASSA II, AKA tree removal, out of the General Fund, $12,210. And that was for sod at the mobiles over at Auburn Elementary School. SAP America, Inc., paid out of the General Fund, $20,492. That's for Crystal Reports renewal, it's sole source, and that's for the district-wide. TRA, Inc., paid out of the General Fund, $12,030.20 paid for the school fund's license, and that's district-wide. Nadevo LLC paid out a general fund for $13,909, and that's for the audio replacement for the boardroom, and that's district-wide. Tyler Technologies paid out of the General Fund, $18,084. And that's for our renewal of Versa, this is for Versa Tran migration, and that's for the Transportation Department. Southern Computer Warehouse, that paid out of Capital Projects Funds for $39,880 for 40 Chromebook charging carts, and that was district-wide. And then the rest of them below were all board-approved, so I'm not going to go through those individually. Do y'all have any questions on these? Yes, ma'am. It has to do with our financial software. So it talks to Crystal Reports, and it's able to give us some of our financial software in a live automated Excel spreadsheet that we need.
I just had not seen that before.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All righty. Next, we have Mr. Purno with System Operations report.
Okay. Good evening. Just a few photos of our projects here. BASSA II, and these pictures are a couple of weeks old, taken before the break, but continuing to make good progress there. I'm starting to get ceiling tile put in place, casework inside as well. And that picture of the curtain wall there, that first picture, to get sealed up. Okay. BASSA III, our Performing Arts Center. Couple of site work pictures shown there. The parking lot, which is actually just across the street or across the drive there. And future tennis courts beyond that. Grading work is being done for that. And starting to get some materials, storm pipe and so forth delivered to the site. And finally, our site improvement work at C-FIT. The playscape pieces are mostly in place now, and so we continue on with the site work. But that, that project, of course, is well underway, moving along very well also. And that's it.
Joe, I'd like to give a shout out to not only your team, but also the people we choose to work with. These are probably some of the cleanest job sites I've ever seen. I see a ton of job sites all the time, and, I mean, for you guys to be doing so many things, it's always neat.
Inaccurate.
And organized, even though it's a madhouse. It's all very clean.
Thank you.
So that says a lot for our system when people are, you know, going and looking at our, our new improvements that are being built.
They do a fine job, and particularly with BASSA there. Now, and C-FIT too, the middle of a campus that's ongoing, you know, schools taking place every day, they, they really do a good job, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. All righty. Next, we've got Dr. Moten with Teaching and Learning.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Beggs, anything we planning personnel?
Not at this time.
All righty. And Dr. Thompson, Strategic Information Services.
Not at this time.
Thank you, sir. All righty. We're going to go hop on down into new business. The first thing I'd like to talk about new business-wise, I was going to do at the beginning, but we have some new business sitting right here next to me, so we'd like to welcome Mr. Rob Johnson. We're very excited to have you filling in as interim for us. So we just want to say welcome, and we look forward to working right alongside you.
I'm overjoyed to be back, and thank you so much, Board, for asking me to do this. I am not looking for a job, and I had to quit two jobs for me to sit in this chair. So I think it was a blessing, because I was trying to cut back anyway, so actually, this job would be a lot less than what I normally do with my three jobs I had. That's what you get when you retire. But thank you so much, Board. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. All righty. So the first thing we're going to talk about is the affirmation of the strategic plan, system vision, mission, and beliefs. It is there in our packet for review. I believe, Dr. Thompson, you and your team have been working on this?
Yes, sir. We'll have that up to you at the end of this one.
Okay. Awesome. With all the yellow, red, and green. I love it. We appreciate that. That looks really good. And then also, we'll have the affirmation of the PolicyBH Board of Education Code of Ethics. Just make sure you guys go in, log into the backend, review those before we vote on those next week. Now, I would like to invite up Mr. Sinclair to talk about E-Rate Networking RFP.
Thank you. Just as a reminder about the E-Rate program. It's the program with which certain technology purchases are partially funded by the federal government, based on our free and reduced lunch count. And we currently sit about 80% funded on eligible items, 20% out of pocket when we make these purchases. And the E-Rate process is a year-long process, and where we are right now is the point where we are filing with E-Rate what we would like to purchase. So I need Board approval to do that. But the amount of time it takes to actually get the approval, my approval will come anytime between July and December. So we are looking far out as we do this process. So as part of our ongoing technology improvement process, replacement network switches and UPS backup units are sought for AIM, along with wireless access point controller for Ares. E-Rate funding is being sought for these purchases. An RFP was posted, and four vendors responded. And again, because this is a proposed E-Rate-funded purchase, there is a, a process that they require you to follow when you evaluate them. It's not just the low cost. Low cost is the most important factor, but you can also weigh other factors, so you create a competitive bidding matrix. So you can see the response there from the four vendors. The low bid and highest score responded was MXN. They met the terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with us before, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. So we anticipate getting E-Rate funding again of 80%, but E-Rate funding is not a guarantee. It's just a probability, which will leave us responsible for the remaining 20%. Because this has to go through the E-Rate evaluation and approval process, it's possible our final award may vary. So we anticipate E-Rate paying $88,969 of the total, leaving us out of pocket for $22,242.40. But if our actual out-of-pocket responsibility exceeds more than 10% of that, so if we go over $24,466, we'll bring this back to you after we get our E-Rate approval to have one more round of approval from the Board. If we are below that $24,466 out of pocket, we will just proceed with the purchase. The financial impact is it's $111,212 total. We anticipate E-Rate funding of $88,969.60. District funded is expected to be $22,242.40 from SPOST IT funds, but we've left ourselves a bit of wiggle room in case they, in case we don't get as much funding as we thought. So our maximum out-of-pocket for district funds will be $24,466.64. The superintendent recommends approving the purchase of network switches, wireless access points, and UPS backup units from low-bid respondent MXN in the amount of, that's a typo, $111,212, with up to $88,969.60 funded by federal E-Rate funds, and between $22,242 and $24,466 from SPOST IT funds.
Any questions? Consent? All righty. Thank you.
Thank you. This next item is also E-Rate-funded. Our current district firewalls are approaching end of life and are straining to accommodate the increased demands of higher speeds and the increased device count on our network, and so replacements are being sought. An RFP was posted, and four vendors responded. Because this is a proposed E-Rate-funded purchase, again, we've done a competitive bidding matrix. And again, the low bid and highest score respondents were the same. Sayers met the term of the RFP. They've done similar business with us before, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. E-Rate, firewalls are a little trickier with E-Rate. The rules for E-Rate funding are about as complicated as the tax code. And so they have a variety of portions of firewalls they'll fund and a variety of portions that they won't. So we anticipate that of the total proposal, that $158,640 will be eligible to be funded by E-Rate at our 80% funding level. So 20% of that $158,000 will come out of our pocket. The remaining $170,000 of the total response is not E-Rate-eligible at all, so we will pick up 100% of that portion of it. So I've kind of broken that out. Eligible for E-Rate funding is $158,640.96. 80% of that is what we are likely to get, so we are likely to get a funding of $126,912.77. Of the eligible $150,000, the remaining 20% will be our out-of-pocket, so that's $31,728.19. The ineligible portion of $170,000 will be 100% our responsibility. So anticipated, we anticipate federal E-Rate fund will pay $126,912.77, and we will end up paying $201,864.80. Because we are requesting E-Rate funding, but no funding is guaranteed pending all the review process, and because the firewalls are mission-critical, we can't not do this, we are asking you for approval for the full cost of $328,777.57 out of SPOST IT funds. In other words, if our funding rate is different or we get no funding, we still need to proceed with the purchase, so we're going to ask that you approve the entire amount, and we won't be coming back to you. We'd be certainly happy to report back to you. Financial impact is $328,777 total from SPOST IT funds before an anticipated but not guaranteed $126,912.77 discount. So the superintendent recommends approving the purchase of replacement district firewalls from low-bid respondent, sayers of Decatur, Georgia, in the amount of $328,777.57. I know that was a little convoluted. Sometime between June 2024 and January 2025. We're from the government. We're here to help. It depends entirely on when you get in line. We're getting in line early. Our E-Rate consultant makes me do that, which is awesome. But also depends on the luck of the draw as to who you get that does your review. They have a pool of people that do the reviews. Some are efficient, some are not as efficient. And it depends on how much funding they have available and how many requests they get. There's a lot of factors that go into when we get. We have been notified as early as June and as late as January of the following year.
So have we ever not got, I don't remember us ever not getting E-Rate funding.
No. I can't even remember us not getting the amount we thought we were going to get, as a rule.
Yeah.
But again, I just want to be upfront. This is not a guarantee. This is something we apply for every year, not something we just automatically get every year.
Stuff happens.
Government happens. Yes, sir.
You're telling us the worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario is totally out of pocket of $328,000. Yes, ma'am.
And we got to have it. Consent agenda? All righty.
Thank you. Okay. Last one. Aside from major projects, the district has a frequent need for smaller-scale, low-voltage cabling work during the course of a typical year, adding data drops for a new office or that kind of thing. An RFP was posted for a fixed-rate work, fixed-rate for this work, and seven vendors responded. Responses were evaluated by weighted cost matrix as shown below. Typically, adding one drop is our most common request, adding two data connections is our next, and so on down the line. And so we weighted them according to the most likely count of drops that we, or requests that we were going to get. So one data drop, we weighted at 20% of the total evaluation. Two data drops came in at 15%, and so on. You can see the matrix there. And then we also, as a check on that, we took the last 10 miscellaneous jobs that we had done, applied the responses to see who came in low bid using that methodology as well. Based on the weighted comparison, Tech Optics came in as the lowest cost respondent, with Georgia Technology Systems second. Using a comparison to our last 10 jobs, again, Tech Optics came in as the lowest cost respondent, with Georgia Technology Systems second. So either way you look at it, these are the lowest bid responses. We have been using the responses, the results of this RFP already this year as per Board guidelines for work below $75,000. We anticipate crossing the $75,000 board-approved threshold if we have additional work during the remainder of this year, which is usually is likely. And so we're now bringing this forward to you for approval as per Board protocol. Neither vendor is adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. Tech Optics has successfully done similar business with the district before. And the pricing is as shown in response from various budgets as needs arise. The superintendent recommends authorizing the use of low-bid respondent, Tech Optics as primary vendor, and second-place respondent, Georgia Technology Systems, as backup vendor if Tech Optics is unavailable for miscellaneous, miscellaneous low-voltage cabling work during the 2023-2024 fiscal year, and for renewal of this authorization upon agreement of all parties in the 2024, '25, and the 2025, '26 fiscal years.
So what's the dollar amount?
It will entirely depend on the nature of the request we get. If we get no request, we, we have nothing out of pocket. If we get a request for a single data drop, it'll be, you know, $165. So it all depends on the workload. I can tell you on average, and this has not been an average year, on average, we end up doing somewhere between $25,000 to $40,000 in miscellaneous cabling work most years. This year was higher. We did a lot of camera installations this year. That took a huge chunk of that.
So if the Board approved $75,000 per year, you think that would be enough? Would that have been a break in that?
We're, we're not requesting a specific amount. We're requesting that we are able to use this vendor for, for, at a fixed rate of the fixed cost that they've given us per data drop, and the fixed rate they've given us for labor, and the fixed rate that they've given us as their markup on, on materials. There isn't, there's not a cap on it.
My, my problem with that is that I don't like voting to approve some sort of money. You see what I'm saying?
I do.
Before it comes back to us. For example, this year was not a one because of what we were saying. So $75,000 is more than we're afford. I would feel more comfortable if we had an amount on there, so if we said it goes under $75,000, you didn't come back and tell us why.
We're about to go over 75. If, if we put $100,000 on it this year, I, I'm fairly confident that that would be an acceptable cap. I don't foresee a lot of, a large number miscellaneous for the rest of this year. We've done timer materials bids before, though, where we haven't put a cap on it, because it's all still dependent on the budgets being available. But I'm at the pleasure of the Board, however you are most comfortable with, with us wording it.
Jennifer, what are you comfortable with?
I'm, I'm really comfortable with the, with what John's doing here and with the tech optics, but I think maybe we should put it at like $150,000, and, because we're already at $75,000 halfway through the school year, so we can do $150,000 cap, and if we go over that, we'll come back to the Board.
I'm, I'm good with that. I think it would help you for budget processes too. I mean, we just can't have a lot of stuff out here where we don't know how much we're going to spend, and we hope we have enough.
Well, he made, he, this is all inside his budget that's already been approved for repairs and maintenance type of stuff, so that's kind of how Transportation does it too. But yes, I'm, I, I think that maybe we should put $150,000 cap on it, and we'll come back to you and use that vendor for more than that.
Why would this not just fall under our sort of low cost? Is, I think we just raised it to $75,000. Is that correct?
It's per vendor, per year. That's what, that's what our, our purchasing threshold is, $75,000 per vendor per year.
So theoretically, it could already be, I mean, if it's under $75,000, this doesn't need to come before us at all.
Yeah.
The only reason it's here is because we're at that.
Right. We, we, we've had, the jobs, for the most part, have been $1,000 here, $1,500 here.
Overwhelmingly, it's not, it's just, it's going to be less than $75,000.
If, if I have any job that's more than 25, I'm going to put that at, to bid as a separate project. These are the small jobs. This is.
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So do we all agree to add it to the consent agenda with the $150,000 cap?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All righty. Next, we've got Dr. Wood with EV Equipment Grant for fiscal year '24.
Good evening. So a couple of months ago, we applied for an EV grant through the CTAE, through an Equipment Opportunity Grant, and we did this through BASSA, through CTA at BASSA for our engineering program, and we were awarded the grant of $150,000. And Switch Vehicles was a recommended vendor during our application process and the budget process from the DOE. So tonight, a little bit of background, so we received the grant, and we'll utilize those funds to purchase two electric vehicles. The purchase from Switch Vehicles includes the professional learning and all the materials to build two electric vehicles. BASSA is, would like to add this as an elective going into the fall of 2024, and it's called the Light Duty Hybrid Electric Vehicle Technology. It's one course. And so the total cost for these two electric vehicles and all the professional learning is $150,000, and all of that will be paid out of the grant. And so the superintendent is recommending authorizing the purchase of these items to include professional development for the BASSA engineering teacher from Switch Vehicles. They are a sole-source provider of the supplies, the resources, and the professional development. Any questions? And I included the application, the award letter, the sole-source vendor letter from Switch Vehicles, and the standards for that one course. And I'll be back in a month or so to propose, hopefully, the adding of that course in the fall of 2024.
Sounds fun.
Congratulations.
Yeah. It's exciting.
Yeah. Consent agenda? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty. Next, Ms. Houston with Retention Bonuses.
All right. On December 18th, 2023, Governor Kemp announced a $1,000 salary supplement for all eligible QBE-funded school-level staff in Georgia's K-12 public schools. The superintendent is requesting the salary supplement, supplement extend to all of our eligible employees who are not funded through the state QBE funding formula. The salary supplement extends to all of our eligible contract custodians who are not covered under the state salary supplemental plan, not covered by QBE. $1,000 for full-time and $500 or $250 for part-time or floaters, depending on the hours worked per week. Employees and contract custodians will be eligible for the supplement if they have been employed by Barrow County School System or contracted with Primero ACS or Top-notch 90 calendar days as of December 18th, 2023. They must also be active employees or custodial contractors on the day of the check, which should be in the next week, hopefully, depending on how, if y'all approve it or not. Current employees or current, or current custodial, custodial contractors that have not fulfilled the 90 calendar day rule will receive their funds once they have completed the 90 days. Special rules will apply to those on an FMLA or workers' comp. This salary supplement will be distributed to eligible employees and contract custodians as quickly as possible in January. This supplement is not earnable compensation per TRS, therefore, no TRS will be deducted. The estimated cost is 2.5 million. Total reimbursement from Georgia DOE is 1.7 million. So the financial impact will be about, up to $200,000 in the general fund fund balance, and that would be for our contractors. Because if y'all recall, we got written up in our audit because we paid our contractors through ESER funds without the proper wording in the contract. It was ridiculous, but I was able to make it through emotionally scarred, but we made it through.
The only write-up.
Only.
The only write-up.
In eight years. So, oh, so anyway, okay. And then up to $600,000 in ESER funds, so, and then 1.7 million from various funds. However, that would be covered by the Georgia DOE and bright from the start. So zero net costs. So the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve a one-time salary supplement of $1,000 to all eligible employees and contract custodians. Net cost to be offset by the state of Georgia. Estimated cost from CARES ESER II funds would be $600,000, and estimated cost from general fund fund balance, $200,000, for a total of $800,000 cost to the school system.
Do we need to go ahead and vote on this?
I would like that, please.
Jennifer, do we know how many, how many employees this is?
I can get that for you. I apologize. I can get that for you.
All righty. We'll vote tonight.
Thank you. All right. County Line Elementary School and Bethlehem Elementary School have undergone renovations and will be completed this summer. As part of renovations, new furniture is needed. A request for bid was issued for classroom furniture. 16 vendors responded. Recommendations are based on best price, most durable product, uniformity of products, and timeliness of delivery. Total cost will be $241,380, with an additional $24,138 for changes in quantity needed and changes due to timeliness of delivery or product quality and durability. The financial impact, $241,380 plus contingency of $24,138, for a total of $265,518 out of our ELAS Capital Projects. So the superintendent recommends accepting the highlighted price per line item on the attached bid tabulation sheets for classroom furniture at County Line Elementary School, Bethlehem Elementary School, and replacement or growth throughout the district. The total cost will be approximately $241,380. We are also asking for the contingency of 10% for adjustments in quantity and permission to go to the next lowest bid if product standards or timeliness of delivery becomes an issue. So total $265,518 out of ELAS Capital Projects funds.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Consent? All righty. Thank you.
All right. The next one is BASSA II will be completed this summer. A request for bid was issued for classroom furniture. 12 vendors responded. Recommendations are based on best price, most durable product, uniformity of products, and timeliness of delivery. Total cost will be $244,800, with an additional $24,480 for changes in quantity needed and changes due to timeliness of delivery or product quality and durability. These funds will be paid out of ELAS Capital Projects, so the superintendent, superintendent recommends accepting the highlighted price per line item on the attached bid tabulation sheets for classroom furniture at the new BASSA II. Total cost will be Total cost will be approximately two hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred. We are also asking for the contingency, so the total of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
Consent agenda? All righty, thank you, ma'am.
All right, this is the last one. The Wonder Bear High School Band Booster Club sent out a bid for a hundred and eighty band uniforms. Two companies responded. Wonder Bear High School Band Booster Club decided to go with Fruh Hoff for consistency of product, past experience, comfort, and durability. This will be paid out of the Booster Club for seventy-four thousand eight hundred and four dollars and fifteen cents, and then a district loan to Wonder Bear High School, Wonder Bear High School Band Booster for forty-five thousand dollars. So the superintendent recommends awarding the bid for Wonder Bear High School Band Uniforms to Fruh Hoff for one hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and four dollars and fifteen cents. Funds will be paid out of the Wonder Bear High School Band Booster Club and a loan from the district.
Any questions?
Right now is for four years.
How long do the uniforms last?
Ten years, supposedly. Does that, does everybody feel comfortable with ten years? Yeah.
And this is what we previously done?
This is what we've previously done. We are in charge of educating students and anything extracurricular. You know, we're, we really can't just pay for all band uniforms and football uniforms. We can't open that box.
What timeframe is coming up on that, what actually is the uniforms, as far as the tenure?
Um.
We don't know.
I'm not sure. They haven't said anything to me.
What would happen if the Booster Club didn't raise the money to fund uniforms? They'd have to wear the old ones?
They would just have to continue with their, their old ones. But they, they do a lot of raising money. They have a lot of opportunities to raise money with UGA. And they also have to pay a fee to be a band member.
They run the concession stand?
They run the concession stand at the football games, too. Yes, sir.
Okay, consent agenda?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All righty, next, we'll invite Mr. Purno back up to talk about Kennedy Elementary's concrete path.
Okay, so Kennedy Elementary School would like to install a concrete walkway at their playfield at the back of the school. They've allocated local school funds for this purpose. And so we collected multiple quotes for the work. And Charles Black Construction provided the low, low per square foot cost for that. So we're asking the superintendent to recommend Charles Black Construction for the installation of a concrete pathway at the Kennedy Elementary School playfield.
Any questions?
Yeah, why was that third one so much higher? Any idea? Are they using gold, diamond?
I mean, I can speculate. They're further away. They have more overhead. You know, they, they may have other suppliers at a higher cost.
Three times as high? That's what it is.
Yes, ma'am.
All righty, we'll add it to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All righty, next, we'll talk about the superintendent search. After doing research, I think we've all agreed upon to move forward with King, Cooper, and Associates. I had a long conversation with Frank King. Very knowledgeable of Barrow County, him and Dr. McCannon. They were able to name a few of our board members, know lots of people up here at the PDC. Know our past, know our vision, and I think it would be a great company to work with while we go through these next steps. They were right in line with GSBA's flat fee of ten thousand dollars. So do you guys have any questions or comments you want to talk about before we vote on that later tonight? Dr. McCannon will be here if we vote tonight and agree to move forward with them. He will come at our board meeting next Tuesday to do his formal presentation on next steps and how the process will work. We all good with that? All right, we'll vote on that tonight. And then the two items we amended to add, the first one we'll talk about is we need to have one more Board of Education retreat this year. Right now, Rochelle has it scheduled for March twenty-first. We've got quite a few local things we need to talk about, growth and a few other things. It would just be a three-hour training. And right now, she has it scheduled for nine to noon on the twenty-first. And check and see, does, will that work with everyone? And remember, we've got our second training of the year. It's on February twenty-second, and that's an all-day one here from nine to four. So this one would be March, the Thursday, March twenty-first, just nine to noon.
And what was the one in February?
February twenty-second. That one's all day, nine to four.
Okay, that's February one?
February twenty-second. And then, so the one we're, that one's already scheduled. The one we're discussing tonight is March twenty-first, nine to noon. Everybody good with that? All righty, so we will vote on that next week. Add that to the consent agenda. And then the last thing we're going to talk about tonight, before we go into executive session, is the timeline for the process to fill the vacancy of District Nine at Large Seat. If you look in your folders, Rochelle printed out a really nice timeline for us that if we agree and vote on this tonight, we will, let's see, tomorrow, they will send a legal notice out and post on the district website. It'll go in the Barrow Journal Wednesday, the tenth, to meet that timeline. And then we'll have two full weeks to accept letters. So from the tenth to the twenty-fourth, we'll accept letters of interest till noon on the twenty-fourth. We will come together the next day, Thursday, the twenty-fifth, at five PM, to review the letters of interest and decide who we would like to call for interviews. And then on the twenty-ninth, that following Monday, we would have a called board meeting to interview the desired candidates. And then we would vote that night. They would not take part in the work session on the thirtieth because they wouldn't give them time to be sworn in yet, but they will the following board meeting, the first one in February. So is everyone okay with this timeline? The idea, this is quicker than we normally do it, but the idea is we're starting a superintendent search, and I'd love a full board to be together as early in this process as possible. So when you're looking at your calendar, obviously, we have tonight, we have next Tuesday's board meeting. We would have Thursday, the twenty-fifth, called board meeting to review the letters. Monday, the twenty-sixth. I'm sorry, Monday, the twenty-ninth, called board meeting to interview the candidates. And then we'd have our standard work session on the thirtieth. And if everyone is good with that, and then right below it, you'll see the blurb that'll go out as the press release. So if everyone is good with that, we will vote on this item tonight as well.
The Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, getting the letters of interest. Obviously, I would like to have time to review those letters before we meet to discuss them. So are we going to get time to see those on the twenty-fourth?
Okay, I'm ready for you by, like, three. Do you want to go by, by three?
Does that work?
There really aren't going to be some data review, but I, I mean, I can do that. I don't know about anybody else. But I don't want to walk in and sit down and say, oh, there's ten letters, I have to.
Well, it's that we're going to review them and then, then not interview them until the following Monday.
Right, when I'm saying even so, if we don't need to discuss it, we need to know what we're discussing. See what I'm saying?
Right.
Would they be available digitally? Yeah, can we do that? Because I'm supposed to go pick my mother up. Go take care of my mother.
That'd be great.
So Rochelle, by three PM on the twenty-fourth, will email either, let her know if you want your printed set for you to come and pick up. If not, she'll send them to us digitally for us to review. And then we'll meet at five PM on the twenty-fifth to discuss them. Okay? Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. We'll vote on that tonight. Next week, we will make a motion for authorization for committees to meet. And now, at this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 All righty, guys, if you'll give us a room for just a few minutes.
So I wanted to give you this on behalf of Dr. McMichael for being recognized as November's Committee Member of the Month. And we just appreciate all that you do for the school system, for students, and your caring attitude and everything that you were nominated.
Thank you so much. You're so sweet.
I'm Rebecca Heiner. I'm the System of Care Coordinator for Advantage Behavioral Health. I'm the System of Care Coordinator. I cover all ten of our counties that our Advantage covers. We're a community service board. So my role is to, to kind of step in and help fill the gaps with youth and families. I work with ages five to twenty-six and their families. And with Barrow County School System, just having the opportunity to collaborate with Jeanette and other school social workers and school staff to assist with high-acuity, high-risk kiddos and kind of stepping in to help the families through transitions to where otherwise they may kind of get lost in the mix of things or just essentially providing the extra layer of family support to make sure that the kiddos and family can reach stability and reach their goals ultimately.
So Rebecca is our go-to person specifically with Advantage Behavioral Health Systems. She always answers our call, is quick to answer our emails from anything where we've got a high-risk or vulnerable family or student that might need mental health services, need help, you know, navigating homeless services or even extra support for autism.
For helping with BCSS schools, a lot of it has been working with Jeanette and others on staff with meeting basic needs for families and kiddos with homelessness. A lot with ADD kiddos and families, autistic services, and kind of working with the school system to make sure that the kiddos are getting their needs met in the school system with IEP, BIT plans, many kind of transition of care. Just kind of filling in the gap with, you know, if a kiddo has been discharged from the hospital or may need a higher level of care, or just kind of being that family advocacy to kind of be present to make sure that the youth and the families are having the opportunity to be heard and that everyone can kind of be on the same page to provide the best care possible.
Rebecca is one of our representatives on our LIPT team, which is our local interagency planning team, as well as she attends some of our community-based risk reduction meetings, which really allows us to kind of talk about what services Advantage does have, how they can possibly help with our students that we bring to those team meetings. But in addition, if I've got a family and I'm just stuck and I don't know, you know, where else to send them, or I know that Advantage could help, but I'm not sure how, you know, she's one phone call away.
I think the school system goes above and beyond for their own staff and employees, but also for the youth and the families. And just being able to have that partnership and that relationship with them to make sure that if there's a need that Advantage can meet or a need or a resource that I'm aware about in the community that I can connect them to, that I'm able to assist and offer that support. I don't love being in the spotlight, so that part about it is, you know, it is what it is. But it made me, makes me feel very valued. You know, I pride myself on working really hard to have good community partnerships and connections. Everyone at Barrow County School System is always one phone call away, very available, very willing to have conversations and collaborate. At the end of the day, to do what is ever is best for the kiddos and the families. And just being able to be a part of that is something that I highly value.
I'm Paul Thornton. I teach music technology, guitar, and piano at Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. So music technology is basically music production, recording studio things. We do anything from composing music electronically, live recording, recording in the studio. So in this lab, we have twenty-four stations. Each station is equipped with a computer, a MIDI controller, where they can do their editing and composing in this lab. Currently, the lab is used for piano and guitar. I don't teach music technology in the spring, but in the fall I did. And then here, we've got our recording studio. We're getting a new building here at BASSA, so in that building, I'll have a full, proper recording studio. We have created a recording studio here in the Sims Academy. So I've got the studio here that's set up for podcasting. We have a few student groups that are doing some podcasting, so they do that in here. But this is also where my music technology does singing, guitar playing, drums, full-band things. And then here's our control room right here, which is where the students, you know, listen to it, record, make adjustments and things like that. And then afterwards, they'll go back and edit those for a final product. Planning is typically on the weekends for me. If we're talking specifics, I would say Sunday afternoon and Sunday night is when I am just doing research for whatever I want to present to them that week. This semester, I teach guitar class and piano class, so we're studying different guitar players, famous guitarists. Same thing with piano. Right now, we're going through historical time periods with piano. So there's a lot of research on my part that's being done and then how I'm going to present that to the students. I think you have to be patient, and that's something that I think every teacher will tell you. When you come to work, you can't necessarily control what's going to happen that day. There's a lot of variables with students, and they're all coming from different backgrounds. And I think you have to be patient with them and take them wherever they are. And then the other thing I think you need as a teacher is, is the ability to forgive yourself because we make mistakes as well. And sometimes, you know, your mistakes may affect your students or your coworkers. You have to move past that because nobody's perfect. We're listeners, and the biggest thing is we're here to facilitate. We don't control what they do. We just help them kind of discover who they are and what they want to be later on in life. And if we can do that, then I think we've done our job.
So my name is Andy Dean.
My name is Amber Hagie.
My name is Allison Kramer, and I'm the graduation specialist at Wonder Bear High School.
I was failing Algebra I. I had to remake that class because I had failed it my freshman year, I think it was. But she really encouraged me and put forth the effort that I was not putting forth. And she picked me up and she put me where I needed to be. And she was, I was staying after school for tutoring, and she was just, she was really, she's very one-on-one, very like interactive with you. Like, she sat there and just talked me through it, even if I didn't understand it. And I would get really mad because I couldn't understand it, but she was very calm. And I just think she's an amazing person. She really helped me through Algebra I, definitely.
Graduation coaches, the way we're doing them now, differ a little bit from kind of what we've seen in the past in that graduation coaches, you know, basically pick up seniors, work with those, maybe some second semester juniors and work with them to get them caught up on credits, these type of things, get them through. And these folks do that. But it was really designed to, to start earlier than that. Middle school, freshman year, those type of things, to go ahead and help them, help students get a plan and stick to the plan.
The best thing is just the, the support that Mr. Dean brings is really kind of the, the best thing. So if there's ever, you know, any trouble or any issues, especially with students being in their fourth year, their math class, their senior year, they've got, you know, it's the one they've got to have, you know, to be able to graduate. And so just to have his support through that, you know, if things are going sideways or if I'm having trouble, you know, maybe contacting a parent or something like that, he's just, he's always there to help.
I help them by creating checklist of missing assignments that they're allowed to make up. I also schedule them for extra help and tutoring during our expeditions period, which is the extra period that we have three days a week at the end of the day where they can go and do fun activities as well as get tutoring when they are failing a class. And I also reach out to parents because a lot of times, that's the key missing pieces. The parents aren't even aware that their child is failing. And once I bring the parents on board, they are very supportive and encouraging their child to make up the work that they're missing and get caught up in the classes.
A lot of times, students that I work with don't have the greatest self-advocacy skills. And that's something that I work on and kind of try to bridge the relationship between the student and the teacher so that, one, maybe the teacher's not aware that the student does need that extra support. the student does need that extra support. But two, it also kind of equips the kids with tools to be able to go to a teacher with appropriate language saying they need help because sometimes students don't quite know how to ask for help. And so that's one of the things that I'll work with them.
Okay, so we have always had systems and procedures in place to monitor students as they progress. A lot of those systems, to be honest with you, were more geared towards upperclassmen. And so initially, when our Graduation Specialists came in, that was their primary area of focus. But we realized that students get off track at an earlier age. So as we've progressed throughout the years, we've kind of expanded our capacity and reached down into the earlier grades, so we're able to intervene earlier.
So one of the things about being in this role is that some of my current students or former students of mine, after being in Barrow County for 16 years, I've gotten to see them as middle schoolers kind of grow up and then see them as high schoolers grow up. And some of these kids were severely credit deficient, and just getting to see them mature and grow over the years and put in the effort that they weren't necessarily putting in as a middle schooler or through the COVID years has just been absolutely amazing. And just getting to see them like come to me. I had a student say, oh, I'm going to drop out. Like, hands down, I want to drop out. And then we'd talk about it, and he just wanted to work. And instead of dropping out, he's doing work-based learning. He's a straight A student. He's going to walk across the 50-yard line today. So just getting to see that, just kind of growth and the ability to come in and just be open and honest about what they want and tying that into ways to support them, again with what Barrow County has to offer, is amazing. Getting kids that were, again, going to drop out, and now they're getting welding certificates and going to be an option B student. I mean, it's just, it's huge to see them just turn around and go from just feeling despondent, like, I can't do this, to being open and honest, having an adult care, and saying, okay, you can do this. And then they light up and they're coming to school and they're showing up. And when they have a misstep, they come and they are like, is this going to affect me? Like, no. And the fact that they even care that something that they've done might affect their education. I mean, they're just absolutely huge, wonderful moments to see them have this spark and this light that they want to do something successful that they didn't even think they were able to do three years ago. It's been huge. I love it.
My name is Connor Manning. I attend Wynder Barrow High School as a senior, and I went with TSA to Nationals. TSA is the Technology Students Association, and we work on completing projects engineering-based and competing in that field. I originally started TSA in 10th grade. I took engineering as a ninth-grade class, and I fell in love with it. So I wanted to pursue that further, so I joined the club. So I made a one-fourth inch to a foot scale model of a yacht, a 45-foot yacht. It sleeps four to six people. It is equipped with a bathroom, a kitchen, and extra storage. It is also solar-powered, so all the electronics on the boat are controlled by solar power. And the engines are hybrid engines, so it can reuse the solar power and the electricity produced by the engines to power the boat. I had to learn a lot about 3D modeling further than I ever had before. It took a lot of effort and practice to get organic shapes and such finishes that it actually looks like a boat and not just some amalgamation of plastic. And through TSA, I learned further how to expand my skills in that, as well as in laser cutting and engraving. It helped me with that. And also, my attention to detail has greatly been expanded as it took a lot of hard, tiny, little fixings of stuff to get it to look nice. Winning Nationals was a really relieving thing for me. When they originally called us up, they called the top 10 people up onstage, and they started from third place to first place. When I heard my name not getting called third or second, I was kind of getting stressed out. I was like, I probably didn't place. And then the final, it was first place, and it was, they called my name. Just hearing everyone clap and the cheering of thousands of people was just really relieving and really uplifting. My next steps, hopefully Nationals bound this year. I am going to do, hopefully, another transportation-based engineering project. I want to thank my coach and my team for helping me with doing all of this and just helping me push through such a hard experience of getting everything done.
Hi, I'm Mary Michael Hahn, and I'm the Community Director at Bethlehem Church. And we have had the privilege of partnering with every single Barrow County school for the past two months, serving faculty and staff lanes barbecue provided by Bethlehem Church with also our amazing volunteers from the church. It has been such a joy to get to be in every school, to see all the faculty and staff, and the joy that food can bring to people. And it's been amazing for our volunteers from Bethlehem Church to be in these schools, to see some of their kids, grandkids, family members. I love the partnership that we get to have with Barrow County schools because every time I get to do it, I leave grateful.
So my name is Virginia Pollwood. I'm with the Georgia Ag Experience from the Georgia Foundation for Agriculture.
My name's Ashley Lyre, and I'm with Farm here at Barrow County, and I'm the Office Manager.
I'm Elizabeth Shirley, and I'm with Barrow County Farm Bureau, and I'm the State Secretary.
So we are at Barrow County Elementary School, and this is the Georgia Ag Experience. It is an experience focused around agriculture. We travel around the state of Georgia. During the school year, we predominantly teach at public and private schools all over the state. We're trying to show them the effects that agriculture have on their everyday life. Another great feature about this is people view agricultural careers as someone standing on a farm with pitchfork and overalls. And in reality, there's numerous fields in agriculture. There's technological fields, biology, engineering, mechanics. So this also exposes them to the ever-growing need that agriculture has for future careers. I would also like to say that agriculture is Georgia's number-one industry. We make more money in the state of Georgia off of agriculture than anything else. So what that means is future opportunities for these kids, and it's important to share agriculture with them so they know what opportunities they have.
I think a lot of the kids do say, oh, it's just a farmer, or just, you know, and so getting to see that, like, oh, no, you can do sales in agriculture. You can do, you can be a farmer. You can be a rancher. You can, you know, you can use technology. They thought that was the coolest thing. And so they realize and like, that it's not just in the past, you can do now, you know.
I'm Lisa Hutchinson, and I am the Digital Coach and an eighth-grade science teacher, as well as the Honors Advanced Science Teacher for eighth grade. And I've been at Hayman Morris for about seven years, or six, going on seven years. And before that, I was at North Paulding High School for three years. So I have taught a range of sciences. Here at Hayman Morris, I've been eighth-grade physical science and the ninth-grade physical science the whole time. When I was at the high school, I taught physical science as well as chemistry and environmental science and earth systems, with chemistry being my main focus while I was at the high school setting.
It's really hard for me to give one piece of advice. I think it takes a very special person to not only teach, but to basically survive teaching and do well and want to keep teaching. That's a big part of it. And I think that all comes back to having an open mind, being willing to try new things and adapt and evolve. And, you know, every day is going to be a different challenge, and sometimes those challenges surprise you. So you got to be ready to try something new just on the spot. But also, the thing that keeps me in teaching is the students themselves. So if you don't have a relationship with your students, you're not going to be happy. And so those relationships have been very important to me, just in my own personal life as well as teaching. And you take those students home with you, and they're students that definitely remind you why you do what you do. Sometimes it's hard, just as a human anywhere, to understand that we're all coming from a point of good, right? We all want what's best. We're all trying, and we all have the best intentions. And just that level of trust that like, no, we want what's best, and we're going to try to do what's right for the student and for each other, which is sometimes hard, right? You want to see the good in people, and sometimes that can be a challenge. But I think as long as you're holding on to those relationships with those students and with your colleagues and stuff like that, it gets a little easier. It's like a choice, right? You wake up, and you're like, I'm going to not focus on the bad parts, right? I'm going to focus on what worked really well today. I'm going to work, I'm going to focus on the things that we're positive about today.
Our newcomers, these young men and women and their families, they come to this country, to Barrow County, to our schools, with gifts and talents and ambitions and dreams. And we do our best to meet those needs so that they can create the lives of their dreams, but also because we know without a shadow of a doubt that our community and our county is enriched by having them here as part of our community.
Newcomers Academy has been a great first step for most of those kids to come in, get acclimated, work with really dedicated, focused teachers, doing what we do here in Barrow County, which is meet those kids where they are and then take them forward to be the best students and, you know, have the best educational experience that they can.
When our students come in, they're very shy and very quiet. They don't want to communicate at all with you. They're very uncomfortable.
My first day in school was difficult for me. I didn't understand the English in here. I don't know what happened in this moment.
I didn't know about the culture. I needed to learn how to treat Americans and how to treat the people here.
Everything that was stable is just shaking, shaking, shaking. And you come to this new country, and everything changed.
I think it's hard because I'm here without my parents. You, like, lost your friends in your country where you was.
I miss my grandma. I love so much her, and I want to see her like one more time if I can.
Very scared, sad, depressed, not very confident in myself.
I feel so, so, so stressed, tired all the time.
It's so hard, but you have to try your best if you want to improve. That's why we are here.
As the year goes on, even weeks go on, you can tell that they are happy. They're learning social skills and able to communicate.
You see every day when they come to school, the effort that they put for to learn the new language, to learn the new expectations, to learn the new system.
When I come into Newcomers Academy, the teacher is so good, the new friends are so good. It's new experiences for my heart, for myself.
It's like me. They come here for learn a new language because we want to be better person.
You're thinking like about these new opportunities to get a better education, to get a better life, to get maybe a good job and start helping your family.
Some of their needs are a little more hidden. They're dealing with family separation. They're dealing with loss.
You know, these kids really need someone behind them, and a lot of times, they don't have that person or people. So I think they've done such a great job at this school, just putting themselves behind the kids 100%.
It's not just the students that really are served here. It's the whole family.
I think it's the best thing to know like Newcomer Academy, to be part of Newcomer Academy.
They are not just teaching you English. They are trying to teach you how the country is, the culture.
I think the most important goal of the Newcomer Academy is to help our students feel accepted. Giving them a space and a place where they can try and make mistakes, but feel okay about it, I think is the most important thing.
Once they know that someone's behind them, they're stepping forward and doing what they need to do and showing what they can do.
It's really taking that piece of being barrel bold and doing what's best for kids. And I see that so much in our Newcomers Academy. It's a real exemplar of what we do there.
Many of them are just so hungry to learn. Not only do they want to learn English, but they also wanted to learn the history and the geography and biology and all of the other subjects that they're studying.
They are doing everything possible. And as a teacher, it just feels just amazing to see like, I'm actually doing something. And, you know, they're reciprocating the feeling.
If you feel bad, they want to help you. If you feel that you cannot, they want to help you. If you think that you cannot like pass the class, they want to help you.
Newcomer is a good thing that happened in my life because this is like we are the family you need to learn. I have a lot of friends, many friends, who speak different languages, who's from different countries. It's a very good experience for me.
Now I have confidence, like just believe in myself. That's one of the things that always going to just bring my heart. And that helps you to feel like you can belong here.
Newcomers Academy did a lot. Probably it made me the person that I am today.
We love the community involvement with newcomers and the involvement of the newcomers with the community. The interactions are priceless. They feel their role models. They want to be like them.
They're like, wow, we're making a difference. We're helping them. And they want to be a part of the community. They want to be accepted. They love being here.
I feel happy because I got this chance to live in this country.
For me, it's many, many important.
The newcomers is like my family now, and I feel strong with that.
Newcomer Academy is a big part of my life, and it's going to be a big part of the rest of my life, too.
I love so much. This is the best thing that happened in my life.
It's amazing people. It's amazing experience. It's amazing. I love Newcomer Academy.
I've got some friends here, and I'm here to let you know that you are the Reach Scholar winner.
Hello, Mom. What's up, lady? I won, I won the Reach Scholarship. I won the Reach Scholarship. Do I now? I won the Reach Scholarship. Good one. Thank you. Thank you.
We want to tell you, we're here to congratulate you. You are the Reach Scholar winner for Hayman Morris. Well done. We're here to let you know that you are the Reach Scholarship winner.
Hey. Uh, guess what?
What?
I won the scholarship.
Oh, you did?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, my God, that's good.
Yeah, you're right. You are the Russell Middle School Reach Scholar winner.
I'm the Russell Reach Scholar.
I want congratulations. I'm so proud.
Let you know you are this year's Reach Scholar. Congratulations.
Mom. Yes? You know how I had the Reach Scholarship, right? Yes. I got in.
Got the scholarship. The 2023-2024 Barrow County School System Teachers of the Year. Auburn Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Marquita Sims. Bethlehem Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Lisa Reed. Bramlett Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Haley McCain. County Line Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Ashley Borschelt. Holson Beck Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Mackenzie Holdren. Statham Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Ian Canales. Winder Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Christine Widden. Yargo Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Yargo Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Kelly Cravy. Bear Creek Middle School Teacher of the Year, Amber Mann. Hayman Morris Middle School Teacher of the Year, Anna McBroom. Westside Middle School Teacher of the Year, Jenna Riddle. Appalachia High School Teacher of the Year, Jennifer Carter. Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy Teacher of the Year, Dylan Clark. Winder Barrow High School Teacher of the Year, Sarah Glass. Arts and Innovation Magnet Program Teacher of the Year, Samantha Stroop. Horizon Program Teacher of the Year, Rob Daggett. Sims Academy of Innovation and Technology Teacher of the
Alrighty, guys, welcome back. So at this time, we're going to vote on a few different items. The first one will be, can I get a motion to approve the personnel report as presented? Mr. Bailey, Ms. Stevens, all in favor? Alrighty, motion passes. The next one, can I get a motion to approve Keen Cooper and Associates as our superintendent search firm? Ms. Kelly, Ms. Stevens, all in favor? Alrighty, motion passes. Next. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approves a one-time salary supplement of $1,000 to all eligible employees and contracted custodians. The net cost to be offset by the state of Georgia, the estimated cost from the CARES and ESRT2 funds of $600,000, the estimated cost from the general fund balance of $200,000, which is a total of $800,000. Can I get a motion to approve? Ms. Stevens, Ms. Kelly, all in favor? Alrighty, motion passes. And then lastly, can I get a motion to approve the vacancy timeline for the District Nine at-large seat as presented? Ms. Hendricks, Ms. Stevens, all in favor? Alrighty, motion passes.
Is that everything you need from me?
Alrighty, go, Jordan. Alrighty, if you will look at the next meeting dates, and again, we're going to add, remember, we are meeting for a regular board meeting next Tuesday, the 9th at 6:00. Then we will come back to meet Thursday, the 25th at 5:00 to review the letters of interest. Then we will have a called board meeting Monday, the 29th at 6:00 to interview the candidates and vote on the interim position for District Nine at-large. And then we will have our regularly scheduled work session and called board meeting on the 30th. There's no other information discussed. We're adjourned.